Comes in the form. It comes in the form of a federal tax of credit. And so we want to get, we want to at least get the project started, if not finished, before the end of this tax year. So that it would be a part of this year's tax return. Because we are uncertain about what will happen with federal taxes going forward. And then the second article, and that requires a two thirds vote. And Article two is to see if the town will approve the amount of eight thousand four hundred dollars to be used to fund an architectural feasibility study for the relocation of town offices to the lower level of the Halleck building from the existing capital fund designated for miscellaneous exterior repairs to the police station and the Halleck building. Or take any other action relative there too. So both of these were raised on the twenty fifth of February. And um.
Is that in twenty minutes?
It is in the minutes, but you don't have the twenty fifth minutes because they don't get posted until we approve them. And the twenty fifth was our last meeting. And we just approved them. Three or four minutes ago. But.
So my meaning not in the know is understandable?
It's okay, absolutely. Well, Peter talked about them, but I think after the special town meeting, most people left. And we had a select board meeting that immediately followed the special town. And so special town meeting.
What did he didn't get into minutes?
The special town meeting was the first uh part of the meeting on the twenty fifth of February. I said the select board was later. But and it literally it lasted five minutes. It was called to order at eight twenty three and they returned at eight twenty eight. But um but Peter explained all of this last week and it is in the minutes and Wilson, the the um who wants?
Do you want to make a comment?
Certainly. It's not my call. It's Chair's call.
Well, here is the board to delay this until the annual town meeting. For a vote of fifty eight thousand four hundred dollars, I think it deserves the scrutiny of the annual town meeting, which as we all know is very much well attended compared to a special town meeting in March. That's my concern.
Well, I can speak to that. If we wait until the annual town meeting, we can't begin the project until May. The tax year is from July to July. If we wait until next tax year, there's no guarantee that the federal tax credit of thirty percent of the cost of the project that we anticipate getting to pay back the money that we're going to use will be available. However, in the current tax year, that can't be messed with. So we want to get it so we can file it as the end of this fiscal year. So we really need to start this project ASAP. And it needs to be completed by July one.
Oh, another special town meeting. It's not going to be, we aren't going to vote on this tonight.
I understand you, you it's more for the special town meeting in two weeks.
In two weeks.
Or it might have to be a little more than two weeks because I don't see Ed or um Merk here.
He's dropped. He said Ed was in the hospital the other day, so I don't know if he's just at home or.
So.
I don't know what floor I just heard through the grapevine.
Well, it has to be posted tonight because it has to be posted fourteen days before the special town meeting.
But it couldn't be posted tonight for the annual town meeting.
We we have, we have a lot of time to get it posted for the annual town meetings.
This is for the special town meeting.
My point is that the special town meeting in March doesn't throw the number of residents to the annual town meeting is made.
You need fifteen. That's it?
Well, the top question of what you need is the question of how well informed you want to keep your electorate.
Just like the last. Just like the last special town meeting, the forty people in here decided it offered the whole town. So what's the difference between that and this?
Well.
There's no difference.
If we wait.
Well. It's always a way to run.
But Bob, if we wait, we jeopardize thirty percent of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. And and if we and if we don't get that, then the town will be on the hook for the entire fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for. And the reason we're asking for it is because we can't spend money we don't have. And we have reasonable expectations that we'll get back most of it so that the actual impact is nominal to the town. But until we get pricing and get the project going, we can't really ascertain that. So this is the only path forward for us to be able to do this project and uh secure the potential federal reimbursement that we're trying to get for the project.
I understand the timing, but I'm concerned about the how well informed the residents of Plainfield are with regard to the special town meeting votes. What does what does the board have in mind as far as informing the residents of Plainfield that in this special town meeting?
It's posted. It's on the website.
It would be. It's not yet. It will be.
It is two weeks' service and based on what I've been reading on the website to date, the background information is that I came to the special town meeting two weeks ago about two loticles as they were posted. And I'm aware of the backstory, in that case, two backstories, which had a big more discussion, which still had more impact as residents than did the actual loticles. So I'm concerned about the amount of information that the residents are getting before they if they had this vote, and the aim to draw them to this to this special town meeting.
We could advertise it from the Plainfield post and we could post it on everything Facebook. Or everything Plainfield on Facebook.
This topic of the geothermal, what's been it's been years been talked about and then people would come to meetings, they would be informed about it. And so now.
That's my point exactly. I don't believe as a resident of Plainfield, I'm responsible to come to all select board meetings to understand what's going on. And that's where it appears that it's come to.
The information's out there if you want to look for it.
Um where?
Town website, town office, and you tie somebody, ask the board, send an email, make a phone call.
So you have to go out and talk to Paula and ask her what's going on?
I said it's no different than coming to a meeting and getting informed.
I understand you.
I just had a question. I take your point, Bob, and I think turnout turnout to meetings is all of our responsibility when we know there's a topic that we think many people it way we learn about stuff is word of mouth and picking up the phone and saying, hey, I think this is on the meeting agenda. You might be interested in this. You're on the energy committee. You're on the this. You're on the that. We turn ourselves out to the meetings. But that's just a comment. My question was going to be about the grant because I think that the town's agreement to apply for and accept this energy grant has been in conversation for quite a long time.
Yes.
And so my hope is that people who've been paying attention to that would see this special town meeting and would say, oh, action needed. Let's pump. Um because I I've been aware of this for over a year, but could be wrong.
I think you're right now.
Okay. Anyway, I think I think I I do think you're making a good point though, Bob, which is like posting meetings on billboards. I mean, there's so much expansion happening here just with remote participation. That's been a big move like things are improving, but we still have to turn our friends and neighbors out.
But I'm gonna say a couple of things. One is I've seen tons of people show up to special town meetings if there's something about it that they feel really passionate about going for or against. It is possible to turn out for that format. Another thing I was gonna say is, here's quickly, have you talked to the state about if the fund is still going to be available, if you don't get this federal tax reimbursement?
At this point, the green communities has no assurance for us that additional funding will be available if this doesn't.
If it doesn't come through the background of?
And I think that their position is that if it isn't, then they're the communities that are impacted will probably go back to them and then it might take some time to get some relief. But I don't know if it. We had a similar scenario when we wrote the grant. We had a price proposal in front of us. It took the state six months to give us the grant award. And when you back the price had gone up ten percent, we went back to the states that, well, you know, you took six months. Price went up ten percent. Do we have any ability to adjust our grant amount? They said, well, no, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's it's basically the grant amount that we get from the state is the grant amount. The other way this is funded, we have ever source incentives for each ton of use, which was also money that goes back to the state. And then we have this thirty percent federal tax credit, which is something unique to the infrastructure bill that was passed by the Biden administration that allows municipalities to don't generally violate tax returns to get money back for projects that involve geothermal. So that's how we put together the funding package. And if it all came together, the cost to town before uh this most recent price increase was going to be zero. And the money that we're appropriating is to fund the increase in the price, which has happened in the the almost a year now. And to to fund this thirty percent refund from the federal government. So we get it because we have to spend the money before we can get it better.
And Peter, how much money will we save if we no longer need oil to run this the heat in this building? Do you know?
I don't know offhand if we are what we spend for. Paula might have a handle on that. She's closer to that on the assumption basis, but are uh because the geothermal basically runs on a fan in a vault.
Yeah.
It will not be the same operating electrical cost as, for example, the units we put in at the Halleck building and town offices because those are air to uh air resources as opposed to uh geothermal.
Yeah.
That'll give it over the cool too soon.
Yes, we'll have pooling and feeding.
So it's not only the incentive to get this done quickly so that we can take advantage of the grants that we've already received or been approved for, but will only receive once the work is done. But there's also a cost saving element to it that would possibly advantage the town as well. Yes?
Yes, well, we probably won't see that cost advantage until next fiscal year because we're going to be used, but we'll use heating oil through the season.
Right.
Paul?
Um. I was wondering if we would still maintain this oil furnace and oil as a backup as we are in the house.
Well, it's not required for a backup because the uh.
We think it's constant and it will be.
Because it's geothermal, not air.
Right.
I understand.
There there will be an electrical electric backup in the in the system, but we can't physically fit the oil furnace and the new furnace in the same space. And uh one of the real motivations for this project and the part of the buildings committee is to get rid of the outdoor oil tank because it's been nothing but a nightmare for us in terms of lines freezing up when it gets cold. So it also satisfies a real need to solve a operational uh deficiency in the boat.
Would it be possible to write up this discussion? And distributed it through everything Plainfield on Facebook and Plainfield posting because that captures a much larger squad.
And the website.
I thought. Well, and the website, but he said, I think you said than the website or and the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, all three.
If you are, if you're writing it up, would you consider making a note that we're not sure we're gonna get this thirty minutes in this? Because I think we need to be transparent about that. Except it's a tax reimbursement through the IRS for my environmental bill. And a lot of grants have been paused at the at the federal level. Or frozen. Or frozen or stopped or people spent money and never got the funds back.
That's true. The only difference is that this is a refund, not a grant. So it's not a it's not a grant program. It's a tax refund. So it's part of the tax law, not a not a grant from an agency, it turns out. That's the only difference, which gives me and gives all the uh I have to give Connor even now credit. He has like done a deep dive on this, gone deep into the weeds. He's uh and from all the legal uh writings that he's seen, he is all the lawyers are saying that this is one area that cannot be touched without an active purpose. Uh so.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
But again, it's this tax year. Next tax year could be completely different.
Yes.
And that's why there's.
That's 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 why there's the error. I would I would be happy to wait to annual town meeting if this thirty five thirty six thousand dollars, whatever the thirty percent percentage is, wasn't jeopardy.
This would be proposed by the buildings committee?
This is this is actually the energy committee and uh and because it's a building, not presenting it because it has to do with the building, but the energy committee um wrote the grant, got the funding for it and um and the energy committee is one hundred percent granted.
But the buildings.
The buildings committee.
But the buildings committee is the one that submitted the warrants.
Correct.
My concern is that this information is valuable. But at present, not accessible to the residents. And I think you should make every effort. We you should make every effort to uh to make the availability to the residents.
To publicize in the next two weeks?
Well.
And so you got.
Well, to that end of, I mean, when we go to annual town meeting, there's a whole list of work articles and there isn't the level of disclosure that you're asking for for this one article. And it's a practice we should achieve for and strive for. But I'm not sure it is physically possible to do the level of um outreach that you want us to do in two weeks' time when this is such a critical time. All that's all I've said.
And last year, town meeting, when ninety three people showed up out of six hundred and fifty, so it's not.
And and every article was was explained and articulated on the on the floor of the meeting. Which I'm happy to do that on the floor of the special town meeting.
We'd like to see something of this. But now that, I mean, issue's not gonna change in two weeks. It's a battle. It's a battle we're putting in. I mean.
We will work. We will work to publicize it.
I mean, the work that they did, they should be proud of. They should want to get it.
I think they ought to.
And then get it out to the uh to the residents.
But also the residents gotta look for information too.
Exactly.
Well, to an extent, well.
Right. That's that's part of it too.
I mean. Thank you. I've had my say.
We will do our best to make it more broadly understood.
Ready to vote on it?
Yeah, uh I I moved. Did someone second? I moved that we accept the town warrants as written. Am I second?
All in favor?
All right.
No, Ed's not here. Kimberly, broadband manager, review of the broadband department operation performance to date fiscal year twenty twenty five and the presentation of the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Yes, thank you. This is my annual um presentation to you in your capacity as the municipal light board. Because in Plainfield, the selectmen acts as the light board. You appoint me as the department head. So I sent you a document on Saturday, six pages plus a bunch of spreadsheets. But I can summarize in case you didn't put it under your pillow and absorb it.
I wrote every word except I can't print legal sized spreadsheets.
I know. I'm sorry.
And so I have some. No, I made I made Shannon print them out for me, but I haven't had a chance. I haven't had a chance to really look at those attachments.
So I have one, two, three, four, basically five discussion items here. And most of them are updates. My six pages is really just in case you want more details than what I'm gonna talk about verbally. Um but what I'm seeking from you tonight is any input that you have into my proposed fiscal twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. So the broadband department, unlike all the other departments, is a self-contained unit. It's an enterprise fund. So the all the expenses of the department are covered by revenues raised from providing internet service to our townspeople. I am projecting that that budget for next year is three hundred and forty two thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars. It is um what I have done for you in the very hard to read financial. Uh and this is the enterprise fund practice is I at this time every year, I've got six months of the current year under my belt. I analyze the trends and costs. I give you what's called a variance report where you see in one column what was approved for from last town meeting, FY twenty twenty five. You see the actual spend to the date that I calculated, which in this instance with the twenty eighth of February. You see my forecasts for what we're gonna spend between now and June. And then the total current projected. So and then I show a variance. So the variance trends are revenue is going higher than we guessed last year. And expenses are going lower. We like that. That's how I run things. Um, we expect that we would regenerate what's called retained earnings, which is revenues in excess of expenses by about fourteen thousand dollars at the end of this year. That is including some healthy assumptions about repair costs because we've had the windstorm. We had an unfortunate situation where Mark didn't know a concrete vault existed at the hub and he plowed it up and we're gonna have like a ten thousand dollar repair up there. It's it's okay. It's what happens. We managed to plow that place for six years without digging it up and this was our special year. We can talk about marking and I think when we replace it, we'll put some bigger balusters up there. But I'm assuming big expenses because we've been trending in that. So the three forty two um includes so the thing that's operable, I think, for you, you've been trusting me to calculate revenue and all the details and there's hundreds of lines in this budget. But the thing that I think is important for you is the stipend budget. Because it's my pay, which I'm asking to stay the same at twelve thousand dollars. Um and then I have a little bit of a buffer to pay for other times. So I've, as you know, from last September, I've Brian Hawthorne's back as in a very narrow scope of work where he backs me up when I'm out of town. So he's got a hub swipe part. He gets the alarms. He can act. He knows what to do. Um, so if you have input about the stipends, that would be a time to talk to me. If you have questions about the forecasts or any of the trends, um you can ask them. But what I think the next step after this presentation is I go to the finance committee. But I always like to come to you first because you're my appointing authority. Um. I think somewhere in my budget, I I did talk to you about the brush fire on Summit in October was about twenty thousand dollars in uh repairs. The windstorm is trending now over twenty thousand dollars. I made made decisions not to file insurance claims on both of these because our deductible is ten and we have co-insurance of twenty percent. So I I don't know that it's good. However, our insurance policy is likely to go from a ten thousand dollar deductible to a hundred upon renewal in June. So like basically that is becoming it's becoming stop loss insurance. It's basically like catastrophic events. It's and you know, we'll see what the premiums are. We'll see if we can negotiate. I don't think we can. Um, but that's kind of a segue into my next item. But before I get to that, do you have any questions about the budget or concerns about stipends?
So you projected revenues too? Are you projecting the projected revenues in the cover of your budget?
Yes. Revenues uh cover our budget. It's always presented as a priority then. Then now real life is.
Please, please.
Without any issues and things.
Very good.
Yep. And there's some contingency in fifteen thousand. All right. So next item is when we started this, we established uh once we had a couple of years of operations, we realized it would be smart to ask town meeting to establish a broadband stabilization fund. We did that at May town meeting of twenty twenty one. At that time, my goal was to have three hundred thousand in broadband stabilization um to cover insurance deductibles, big expensive, and also this rotational equipment. We've got a hundred thousand dollars of electronics in the hub. We eventually are gonna have to replace O N Ts, the black box that uh brings the fiber fiber into your home. That's probably gonna, you know, we'll do part of the town a year for the next four years once time, but we're getting to that point. We've been in service provision of service for nearly six years now, and that's the time where we have to start looking at replacements. I would like to increase the target goal of that stabilization fund from three hundred to four hundred because of this experience with storms and because of the knowledge of the of the insurance deductible going higher. As of now, and there was a a handout in my pocket through the retained earnings, every year we've been operating, we have earned money. Um and Paula and Ben do a process of closing up the enterprise fund and then the Department of Revenue certifies the retained earnings. And then I ask you to ask town meeting to vote to put it into stabilization. So we've done that four years in a row. So out of the initial goal of three hundred, we have already put away two hundred and fifty four thousand. If we raise the goal by a hundred, we'll have um a hundred and forty five more to put in. Oh, wait, that was to fully fund. Um. Yeah, we'll have a hundred and forty five if we raise. I have last year's retained earnings is seventy two thousand five oh eight. I didn't have very many storms last year. So we have a big chunk that we can put in. And that will leave us with just about seventy three thousand dollars. Now, my retained earnings for this year are gonna be smaller. So it might take us two or three more years to get to that goal. But I think it's a good picture and I I think you should take this recommendation and we should do the warrant. The warrant things that happen. Any question? Yeah.
Uh, I've in the very early process of this, you were talking about how the town would profit from this. So is that after we get the stabilization fund set? Is that when?
No, we are profiting now. This is the money I'm talking about. This seventy four thousand from last year is the is the money revenue minus expenses. I've done a stabilization strategy to shield the general fund from things like storms. Once we hit that general fund target, we're still hopefully going to be producing retained earnings of some amount every year. And that's when I will come to you as the MLP board and say we're not supposed to be in business to hoard cash. We're supposed to be in business to provide service to the ratepayers. So the next move would be can we lower rates? So the ratepayers by five bucks or ten bucks. I want to get through replacement cycles to see, but I think that's the next logical move is the people who are producing this revenue are the people paying for the service. So you should give it back to them in a lowered rate. That will be like a couple of years from now though. So so hold tight on expectations.
Yeah, I was I was thinking, you know, once the stabilization fund meets its goal.
Yeah.
How would the?
That's what we.
Would you agree with the retained earnings?
Yeah. Return it in. Yes. And it goes to the to the people board subscribing.
Yep. It would be a policy decision that the MLP board sets.
So one question on that, that I I'm channeling Bob Baker right now. Um. Could any of those retained earnings ever be dedicated to paying down the debt or the debt service?
We could have a discussion about it. I have some thoughts about it and I do have the next item, so that's a good segue. After discussing with Ben and and Paula, the debt right now, the outstanding debt for our loan. So this was a two point two million dollar capital project.
It's nine hundred and three.
The town authorized a bigger borrowing amount. We borrowed one. The town authorized a bigger borrowing amount. We borrowed one point three million initially. We immediately paid back a hundred because we had overborrowed a little bit. Our expenses on construction came in lower. But um. We've been paying down sixty-five thousand a year in principal and now the CAF II funds, that federal grant that we secured, which was almost. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a little bit more, that's being paid to us over ten years. That started to flow. And so there was a big principal pay down last year because we got three years of installments in one. Um, and then we've just gotten another one. So then we'll be able to, and those notes are in one-year notes. They're at four point five percent interest, five-five, four, four point five-five percent interest. And what Paula and Ben have um. What I did was a very, very simplified, you know, payoff schedule saying if we say that interest rate stays. Don't know if that's the truth. Uh, but say we stick with our practice of using sixty-five thousand out of the general fund and always put the CAF II money against principal. We will pay down that loan by October twenty twenty-three. So six years. I mean, sorry, twenty thirty-three.
Okay.
I always do that.
What was the term of the loan when we originally took it out?
There are always one-year notes.
Oh, but. Okay.
And they were they were um interest only while we were in construction.
But we must have projected when we would be able to pay it off.
We thought it was gonna take twenty years.
Yeah.
And we will have done it, I think, in fourteen.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
And is that why the interest change is this is a one-year note?
Yes.
Yeah. But then I think you and Paul, you may wanna add, you were talking about maybe because the interest rate environment is so volatile, we would wanna go and look at a. Three-year note. I don't know.
Yeah, I was just saying, when it comes around to do this annual roll over. If because we don't know what's gonna happen with the interest rate environment, if we agree to say, hey, you know, rates are. Under three percent or under four percent for. Then that if we do a three-year note, maybe that'd be better than risking having a five percent for the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have that opportunity to look at that in October or again the following year. And I guess to get back to your bigger point, Paula, I mean, I think this is great. We've been able to pay this. We will have been able to pay this off. Quicker than originally modeled. I've calculated what the interest, what the impact of the broadband debt, principal and interest coming out of the general fund. What that impact is on the tax rate. It's seven cents out of our current eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. So when we get down to should the broadband department start paying off debt or should the broadband department give? What could be the equivalent of a hundred and twenty dollars a year to somebody in a reduced broadband bill? I think the latter is what people are gonna see.
Right. That's what they're gonna feel.
They're gonna feel it. It's the actual direct bottom line to your pocketbook. Whereas that. We're gonna buy some new stuff. You know, we're gonna borrow new money. We're gonna have new projects. They're not gonna feel. Three cents out of their.
Right.
Tax rate.
Right.
That's my. But that'll be a policy decision. We talked with this.
Well, and the tax, if you if you take it out of the tax rate, then it also affects everybody in town, even those who don't have broadband. Whereas when you reduce the rate, you're giving the money back to the people who are actually paying for the service.
Yeah. So that's just an FYI. Obviously, interest rates and timing could change. I don't think the CAF II is. Funding that's gonna be pulled back from the federal government. It's been sort of long ago commitment. The money is, you know, flowing now. It's not something perspective. It's in motion. I don't think they're gonna take that. Um, my last topic is possibly a little controversial, but I have been poring through. Um, my operating expenses. And in addition to the unfortunate repairs. There are also um. Police department billings to broadband department for road traffic details whenever we have storms. Justin has been pretty good. We we had an arrangement where instead of. Sending those bills to Whip City that would then get marked up by ten percent and then come back to me and then, you know, all the paperwork pushing. Um, but those those have been volatile. It it was like sixty-five thousand dollars during construction. The the police department built for traffic details, which we paid for with grant money and borrowed money. So. Now we're, it's coming out of my operating and if it goes up, my ability to do this kind of lowering rates is lower. I did a look through and I thought, oh, my gosh, why haven't I thought of it this way? My department is basically paying all the internet for all the buildings. I don't build every department for the internal. We've got a longstanding arrangement with Highway where they're plowing for us. They don't bill buildings committee or me to plow. Um, I don't back bill Mark if he breaks something. He's dug up some stuff and he, you know. Accidents happen. So from a policy point of view, I'm just really curious about. That.
I didn't think we charged, I don't, I didn't think the police department. Charged other departments for their services.
The department mine, do mine.
But I remember a discussion in the select board not long ago. Maybe it was just the ten percent administrative fee.
Yeah, that's been waived.
Yeah.
Um. I mean, I don't, did they charge road tree warden or anything?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So it's coming out of your budget.
But you don't get charged the ten percent administrative fee.
You're still getting a budget.
Right.
Yeah.
It's the ten percent of of the dollars.
Yeah, it's the officer town and the cruiser town. And it's gone up and down. Last year it was six thousand dollars. So far this year it's been six thousand dollars. Um, so I just, I I bring that. I don't think I expect a full decision tonight, but I think it's something to think about.
Right.
Which is, what are we doing? Because if we're just.
We're just moving money around.
Moving money around. We're taking all this time to bill and pay.
Paul.
The. Thing with the detail. Is there isn't enough money to pay the officers in the salary budget for detail. There's only the allotted amount. For your two full-time and a and a part-time and the detail rate is. Very much higher than the regular rate. For the officers.
Just just so, just so everybody's.
What's this possibility?
Sixty, ninety, and a hundred and twenty.
If it's there, that's.
You've got the possibility of for other departments in town, in other words, not. External, let me just finish my thought. Not departments, not entities like, you know, Verizon or Eversource or somebody that's external to town. What about if you charge them what the normal hourly rate rate of a police officer would be? So.
You have to ask.
Somebody's gotta pay the rest of it.
Yeah, well, but but the per diems don't don't get all the time. They're they're per diems. They're per day.
But isn't Sutton Massachusetts depending on roads that details mandatory?
I'm seeing a lot of flaggers in a lot of other towns.
Exactly discretion of the.
And you don't have to use police detail. You can use a certified. It's you can use a certified flagger. I mean, I let Justin explain this to you.
If it's under a certain speed limit.
Right, there's certain roads that have.
What's the speed limit?
I think it's thirty-five miles an hour.
No, that covers everything in town, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We know, but we don't have any speed limits that are above thirty-five.
One sixteen.
Where? Oh, oh.
Well, every road used to be forty till they.
Yeah, so I think this warrants more data collection, but I do think, and I take your point, Paula, but I think if my argument is, is the. Departments take care of whatever they have to take care of. And if Justin is providing details to fire or highway. Or broadband. And he can estimate his own data about, I mean, he's got an assistant doing all these billings. Estimate his own data and bring that into his budget. Just like we're having to bring. Our stuff into our budgets, like just keep it there. I mean, I I take your point that external. To towns around Eversource and Verizon, but. Those are entities that are in business. Those additional costs to their business show up in our rates. So, you know.
I think it's an interesting idea to have the police department just intellectually have the police department. Have a line in their budget for other town details rather than having the town farm state for it.
Right.
We could do that. We could do.
The thing about paying them is that. Unless you're gonna hit the detail rate anyway, you're not gonna find per diems to do it. So it's gonna be paid on the regular forty hours a week for. Uh, Chief Bushfield and for his sergeant, Dan, which means that if they're out. Acting as flaggers, they're not acting as police officers in that time.
There are certified flaggers that can hire that artists that aren't. Police officers, whether from Plainfield or anywhere else.
There are.
And and they cost less.
Not a lot. Not a lot less. Not a lot less. I think you'll see.
Less is less.
Less is less. I mean, it costs more.
I think it's, yeah, I think if you're in control of a budget though, you make good decisions around how you're gonna use it.
My experience on construction sites. Flag is often cost more than the police officers.
Right.
And that depends on the municipality because the basic of police officers change. Really very managed.
Anyway, thank you for entertaining that slightly more expansive thing, you know. It'll be business as usual until you decide a policy to change it. I will follow up with you.
This will be posted on the website.
I.
Well, I'm sorry, what did you say, Paul?
Well, this, will your report be posted on the website?
Not not after this meeting. It would be after it goes to the finance.
When I public, when I send it to finance.
Cause this is, this is, this is the MLP board meeting piece of this, but.
So just a bit.
Yeah, I think about the finance committee is posting all the town budgets.
Yeah, all the budgets that get submitted to the to the finance committee are being posted. And our meetings are posted and we list who we're going, whose budget we're gonna be reviewing when.
Was was the data on?
On what?
On the posted, the data that's posted.
It's within forty, it's the public meeting law, forty-eight hours, forty-eight business hours before the meeting takes place. No, no, this isn't, this isn't for annual time. This is. We're now in the budget season. The the finance committee is meeting. Pretty much once a week, except we have a couple of weeks off. Bob went to to California to visit his grandkids. But um. And and so at each meeting. In in the first part of the year, first in January, February. All of the town departments and committees are asked to submit a budget. It comes in, it gets distributed to the finance committee. And then we schedule an individual meeting with each department or committee to discuss their budget or for them to present their budget to us. And then um. Then the finance committee tries to figure out how we're gonna put together a budget in close collaboration with. Or maybe I should say Paula does most of the work. Paula did that. And then um we will hold a public meeting. Before the annual town meeting and I don't, I I might have that date on my calendar.
That's the.
That's the hearing.
No, no, that's that's more than that. That's like two weeks, at least two weeks. Hang on, I can I can tell you because I know we've already gotten it scheduled. I happen to be on the finance committee. That is why.
Eight hours plus for any public meeting.
That's any public meeting, any committee. Um, but I think. The.
Judy, would it be helpful for me to jump in?
April seventeenth. Don't hold me to this. I I. I might not have titled it properly, but I have on that day. Finance Committee Budget Hearing. So we hold public meeting. Sorry?
I was just gonna say I have the dates because I'm the one posting them on a website. If I can help out, I'm happy to share them.
Is it April seventeenth that we have our public hearing for the annual budget?
Correct, and then we present uh the budget to the select board on the twenty-second.
So here are two dates to remember, Bob. April seventeenth is a public hearing for everyone in town. I don't remember how far in advance. You said a two-week in advance?
It's that um.
Or is it just public meeting law?
I have a point right now. It's still regular, I'm reading it because it's.
Okay, I. You two have public hearings. I'll have already advanced today after we post the.
If if this isn't a public hearing, it's a budget.
Yeah. Anyway, April seventeenth, there will be a meeting with the finance committee to discuss the. Full town budget as it has been compiled throughout the spring. And then the following week, April twenty-second, which would be this the next Tuesday because that's a Thursday. April twenty-second is like, you know, five days later is when the finance committee presents the budget to the select board. And the select board has to approve the budget. So it can be presented at annual town meeting. So those are two opportunities to understand the full budget and what choices to make.
And those are the ones to turn, wow. It's so great to have a town meeting and I've been on their staff committee for what, three or four years?
And if we get more than. Ten people at the annual budget hearing, I'd be shocked. But we we had one year where we got more, but for the most part, it's thinly attended.
So anyway, thank you for listening to my reports. I appreciate it. We are open and.
Can I say? As for liaison, sure. Alright, I just wanna say Kimberly is the liaison to the MLP. Uh, enterprise. I think you've done a spectacular job.
Thank you.
And I think you did a spectacular job in compiling the information we need to know. Explaining in a way that we can understand it, even though it's a somewhat foreign animal to most of us. And for that, I would like to thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Delilah has her hand raised or or you're clapping?
I was clapping. I was just giving Kimberly some props.
And the miscellaneous mail and meeting notices. Uh, bill from the. Assessment for Veteran Services for fiscal year twenty-six. Two thousand thirty-two dollars.
Do we have to, you said something we have to pay for?
Yes.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
Alright, how about we pay that bill? Oh, I moved.
Now, that's gonna be part of your budget.
That's for next, is it for next?
That's for next year. That's not this year.
Yes.
Alright, never mind.
Oh, it says invoice.
Okay. Right, but they give you the invoice.
I hear.
I'll see a copy of it too.
They give it and we file it until July first.
Memo from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a request for comments and data. Electric distribution and broadband infrastructure investments are planned in the Commonwealth. Many of these investments will require work and access along public railways. In particular, work involving utility poles and potential access to ducts and conduit.
Does that be EAD?
No.
Oh, okay. They're doing a lot of. A lot of different work. It may be related to broadband and they not, this is how I read the.
It's just a.
General FYI.
Yeah. The departments established a deadline of Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Interested stakeholders are requested to be added to the electronic distribution list going forward and a deadline of Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. To accept initial comments and data for consideration. Departments encourage interested stakeholders to present consensus positions and submit comments jointly when possible.
Do you get the data before Tuesday to see if we need to file a comment? I can do that.
I I. Thought when I read this that it might be good to have some of the. People who are doing the work in the road. Sort of present exactly what's gonna happen in town. So that again, we have more insight. It's like when.
Yeah.
M D came through and um. And we reacted after the fact.
Yeah.
Maybe we should find out before the fact. What the work entails, what kind of roads are gonna get destroyed. Um.
And also we took, I know it's a kind of like, kind of like a whole year. Right.
Yeah.
Always heard of this.
This is, my understanding is this is like a blanket notice to all cities in town. I'm not sure that they're doing. Much out here.
They would not do anything, it just got sent to town.
Special is, where are they working and let me look at the data to see if it relates to broadband or if it's the utilities. That have been doing all their infrastructure improvements. And in which case, they have to come before the town for poll hearings. So do have an oversight.
My understanding is it's all the utilities, but this is some. Sort of, so. You know, to get to our state goals of the twenty fifty electrification.
Yeah, and EverSource and Verizon joined the hearing. Who almost all of the nearly two thousand, and now it's probably twenty-two hundred poles. In towns, and EverSource takes the lead. On most, I mean, sorry, Verizon takes the lead on most of the petitions to the town for poll hearings. It's very rare, except for, there are very, that very, those very big tall poles. But I, if you, if I could take a photo of that notice. Or Shannon, if you could email me if I know this, then I'm gonna dip into the bit and I can see if there's anything we should. Comment on in the public comment.
Before Tuesday?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm telling a question. I see that they're doing the polls now from the town to Savoy, which they did to Asheville before, which. Adds polls, moves polls. Without effect, do you, do you have to pay to move your lines? And that's, that's all of the budget?
It is. I mean, we're running a, a utility here.
We got new poles, we've seen.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, um, there is some small provision and because we have a, a ten-year licensing agreement. That we negotiated with both Verizon and EverSource. Um, where all the terms of like. All that we have to do as a, what we're called a, it is a third party attachment. And then we have individual licenses for each pole. And we pay annually to attach the pole, so there's a budget amount to just pay them their. The equivalent of twenty thousand dollars a year to keep our fiber attached to those poles. When they replace poles or repair poles. We often have to mobilize Whip City. They won't touch our fiber. They're doing what, Bubba just told me, and Peter just found out. Which Delila found out, do they just take it off the pole and they lay it on the ground? And they're supposed to notify Whip City and they roll trucks. And they get it back up. They misstepped on some of that medication after the storm day. Um, by pole replacements. So we got some cleanup to do, but. That comes out of my budget and there's only a few exceptions where I have to go back to them and say reimburse me. And it's all in that legal agreement though.
Thank you. Well, I suggested the tree wouldn't be made aware of that. Who knows?
Oh, but what, we're gonna send to Kimberly too.
But he has no phone number on the website and he does not answer emails, so. There again, as far as information goes, can't.
I can get his phone to throw up on the site.
Onto something that's good.
Good news.
Good news. This letter certifies that contingent upon legislative approval of the one point five billion multi-year bond under operation. Plainfield's chapter ninety appropriate meant for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. So that's almost double of last year. Or close to it.
It's chapter ninety, Amber Road.
This says chapter ninety.
Things that are making it up and yes, it is.
Just reading what it's.
It is just what it sells on this thing, so that's good.
No, that's perfect.
Cause last year was like one ninety or something.
I thought it was like a ninety.
It was, but we also had rural roads and fair share, so there, there were three components.
Components. What, do you know what they totaled last year? I mean, how much of an increase is?
This is, this says just chapter ninety, this.
It does, I know it does, yeah.
So that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're moving on.
Last year with the fair share also, I think we were up around four hundred thousand. So we. It's good.
So we're gonna be getting more than the three forty-four. That's just the chapter ninety and that went up from whatever it was before.
We will, yes.
Well, we'll see, but.
We will see what they mean.
To be smart, it's good, since it's the finance committee, they will be excited about that.
And last on the list, this is um.
Not good news.
Not good news, but. This is from Paula. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation from the Plainfield Select Board effective as the end of the three eleven select board meeting.
I guess it's up to you and me. I move that we accept Paula's resignation with. Um, deep appreciation and regret. You will be missed. But we are very grateful for the service they can have done. You do it all the time.
Well, I, I, the time with a heavy heart. But I do have good reasons, personal reasons. And um, I'm still gonna serve the town, I hope. Will never. Not part of my efforts while I live here. Thank you for that, Paula. Thank you, Paula.
So if you know anybody, conference is next week.
March nineteenth.
At seven thirty.
Seven thirty here. Be there, be square. One way of staying in form.
Any other questions?
I move when you adjourn.
I said.
All favored.
Um, thank you. The people on the screen.
And uh. March and follow that.
Yes, I know.